Good afternoon. I'll call to order this meeting of the Lincoln City Council. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located in the rear of council chambers by the door you entered. The meeting today, this meeting today, is part of the ongoing development of the 2024-2026 city budget. The mayor submitted a proposed budget to the council on June 10th. City departments provided further details and information at two council meetings held June 11th and June 12th. And by council resolution, council members were to submit any initial tentative changes to the city budget to the budget office by 3:00 PM last Friday, July 12th. Five tentative changes were proposed, and those were delivered by the budget office to all council members, as well as posted online. Today, we will discuss those changes. I will note that one of the proposals was struck earlier today by the council member submitting it, so we only have four. Later this week, on Wednesday, July 17th at 1:00 PM, we will vote on whether to move any of the tentative changes forward for inclusion in the budget public hearing. That public hearing on the budget is for August 5th, starting at 3:00 PM. Following that hearing, council members will have a second opportunity to introduce budget changes by submitting them to the budget office by Friday, August 9th at 3:00 PM. The order of business today is as follows. The proposed changes will be taken in order, number 1 through 4. I will read the change submitted to the budget office with a short description, and then invite the proposer to speak about their proposal and any other information they'd like to give. After that, I'll invite any comments from council members, as well as questions for the proposer or city staff. As a reminder, we will not be voting on any of these proposals today. That will occur in two days, on Wednesday, July 17th at 1:00 PM, here in council chambers. With that, I'll read the first proposal. The first and second proposals were introduced by myself, council member Washington. I'm going to give an intro to both of them, and then we'll talk about the individual ones. Let me read the first one. For fiscal year 2425, "To appropriate $50,000 in one-time funding from general reserves to help fund the community forest master plan." "The city of Lincoln's community forestry master plan will provide elected officials, city staff, city residents, businesses, and the development community with a targeted set of data and recommendations to guide Lincoln's decision-making and community forest management approach. The plan will enhance Lincoln's community forest as critical infrastructure, a treasured resource, and provide benefits for future residents, visitors, and businesses." One, I want to start out by just reiterating that I believe that trees are really good for urban communities. They provide a number of benefits. Shade, of course, and aesthetics. They improve air quality. They help to muffle sound, making neighborhoods and streets more pleasant. Shade trees also slow down traffic. They provide economic values for property enhancements. They also add to the quality of life that we have here in Lincoln in general, which helps to, I believe, support economic development. And trees also help to make neighborhoods both walkable and livable, both important things. We have over 130,000 city trees, streets, and parks, and we've been a tree city, USA, for 40 years. For all of those reasons, I believe that we deserve to make certain that trees exist well into the future in Lincoln, and that we have a plan to manage those. With that, I believe that the $50,000 is a good investment in the funds already held by the Parks Department, the funds that they've held aside, and the grant dollars they've received. And with all of those dollars combined, they will be able to move a community forestry master plan forward by January 20, or begin the planning in January 2025. All right. So do any council members have questions for me? Or any of the Parks staff who are here today? Councilman Beck, yes?
I have some questions. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate that very much. You said that there were, and maybe this is a question for staff too, so to whomever. You said that there were some grant dollars being leveraged, some other additional funds being leveraged to enhance this plan. This is getting it towards the finish line, if I'm understanding it correctly.
That is correct. And Mr. Yost, if you want to correct me, I believe I've got the numbers. I don't remember the name of the grant specifically, but I know you have set aside some dollars, so please.
Yes, J.J. Yost from Parks and Recreation Department. So we had $75,000 identified in the previous budget cycle for this purpose, and this 50 helps us get to, obviously, to that goal. The other thing is, is we're working on, believe we're able to secure another 140,000 from, through the National Forest Service IRA funds. And so that'll get us, we're estimating that the total cost to develop the plan is about $300,000. So between the 50 and the 75 and the 140, we believe we've got secured in grant funds. We're getting really close, and it's our intent, as Sandra said, to go out with a RFP this fall so we could hit the ground running in 2025.
And if you don't mind, Mr. Yost, for those folks that are listening at home, could you talk a little bit about the community forestry master plan and overarching, what it does, what its goals are?
Yeah, so it'll be multifaceted, but it will look at, it could potentially involve tree inventory, and we're probably going to talk about that as well. But it'll help us focus on what our current state of the trees are, kind of the ages, distributions, population, in terms of percentages, what that means in terms of maintenance needs, maintenance responsibilities, and cycles for maintenance. It'll also help identify where we need to infill or replace trees. And so it'll serve as a guide, not only to kind of the CIP side of things in terms of the funding we need going forward for repair, replacement, and also new plantings, but also on the management side in terms of our forestry section's operations, and to help guide them in kind of the efficient and effective policies, or procedures, I should say, for moving forward.
Okay. So would it be fair to say that this submission by council member Washington, or by Chair Washington, along with perhaps the second submission by Chair Washington, could go into the creation, I mean, we've heard as a council for a long period of time about tree maintenance in our city. It sounds like this could be the pathway forward to creating maybe a more detailed, if you will, CIP plan for trees in our city, so that we can identify needs over a period of time. I mean, is that a fair assessment?
That is a very fair assessment, yeah. You know, and we've been, this has been promoted for quite a while now by our Community Forestry Advisory Board, for just that purpose, to not only have, we're obviously having to be very much in a reactive stage of taking care of the trees that we have. But ideally, we'd have a more long-term plan and procedures in place. And so we do think that this is going to provide a longer-term vision and plan, really put a plan that we can then, the details of which can be shared with the community, so everyone understands what, how and when we get to trees.
And Council Chair Washington, it says that this is coming from the general fund reserves?
Yes. Yep. One-time money, not repeated.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there questions from this side of the dial?
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Washington, or Chairman Washington. Mr. Yost, what you're talking about seems more like a bunch of talk. How, and I'm sure Lincoln has had quite a bit of damage to trees over the last several years from storms and the winters and what have you. Can you tell us, how many trees have we planted this year?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. Chris, do you know? I mean, we can certainly get you that number. We track those. I just don't have it off.
Yeah, I can. I know it's over 200 for this one.
Yeah. I can certainly get you that number.
Yeah, I think, you know, we talk about what we want to do, but I think it would be good to reveal some details on what we've done so far, and what do we actually need? Do we need 500 trees planted by this time of year now, type of thing?
Well, and that's a good point, Mr. Duden, in that the plan will identify what that planting rate should be in order to keep the rejuvenating, the existing urban forest, and...
Something that you should be doing all the time now?
It's something we need to be doing now, right? And so we're trying to get a plan developed so we can do that effectively, efficiently.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea. I just would like to see more details on what are the needs, and how far behind are we? I know we claim to be Tree City, USA, here, but I think Lincoln has had quite a bit of deterioration in tree coverage over the last several years because of storms.
Certainly not getting any younger, the inventory, so good point.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, very good points. Any questions? I just had one question, or one more statement, I guess I wanted to make on this, is that I'm hoping that this master plan will also include folks from other departments so that when you're building this comprehensive urban forestry plan, that we're looking, we're talking to LTU and LES, because both of them, in their operations, impact trees. And I think it's important to make certain that all city departments are on the same page about the plan for trees, so that we can be working together and not working at cross purposes. Never intentionally, but occasionally, it happens, and I'd like to see all of us together on this.
Yeah, point well taken, and particularly LTU, and from so many different angles, including the spacing and placement as they impact vehicular drive lanes and those kind of things.
Yeah. So thank you very much. We appreciate that. All right. Hearing no other questions, seeing no other questions, I'm going to move forward with proposal number two. Try not to go too far, Mr. Yost. The second submittal for a budget amendment was proposed, again by me, Councilmember Washington. "For fiscal year 2024 and '25, appropriate $250,000 in one-time funding from general reserves to help fund an updated tree inventory and assessment. Lincoln tree inventory was first completed in 2016, done in partnership with the private sector and the Parks Department. It provided us a baseline of information, which has been added to the asset management system Beehive. However, it is incomplete and in need of updating. Updating the inventory using the latest tools will provide essential data for city staff, including tree species, health, age, size, and location. This will help staff make informed and efficient decisions about planting, pruning, maintenance, and the removal of trees when necessary." All of the things I said earlier about trees being good for communities holds. I would just enforce that I believe that trees are part of our community's infrastructure, and if we want to have trees into the future in 30, 40, 50 years, 100 years, we need to be thinking about how we manage them as an infrastructure. So with that, I'll take questions. Councilman Beck, yes?
Mr. Yost?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. As Councilman Duden pointed out, so much of our work is budget restricted, simply not having the funds to do everything that we want to be doing. Can you talk a little bit about where we are now with this? Where we are with the asset management system Beehive, and kind of what you have, and the usefulness of the data that you currently possess?
Yeah, so the inventory that was done earlier was a very baseline inventory, and it was actually, we used student interns at the time to help support the on-the-ground piece of collecting that inventory information. And so it was good information to get at the time, certainly all-new information for us to have in a database. But it came, it was a very entry-level inventory, didn't cover 100% of the city. We just weren't able to at the time, and we didn't have a means in place to keep it, to keep the data fresh and updated continuously. So both on the removals and the addition sides, we've had some changes that we weren't able to really keep in front of and keep our database efficient or accurate. So there are various versions of this survey. We'd like to take a step up and use some professionals to help do this, to help gather this information and compile it. And you mentioned Beehive. We now have that asset management system integrated into our workflow, and so that's a system that we can use to help manage the accuracy or the updating of the inventory as we go. So you have to do a new inventory at some point in time, because at some point, inventories just need a complete refresh. But we also believe we can be more efficient at keeping the inventory up and accurate in between those complete refresh periods. So we think we can go, we can stretch out that time length between a major refreshment, if you will, of the inventory by just having the right tools in place to keep it updated on a more frequent basis.
Okay. That kind of leads me into my next question. Chair Washington has made this proposal, which would then get us updated. But can you speak a little bit about Parks and Rec's potential need going forward to keep the data that would be collected, updated, refreshed? Because I know you're always putting in new trees, taking down other trees, pruning trees. You're all over the place. Would, I want to be mindful of the fact that getting the inventory up to date, but then also keeping it up to date, is going to take a sustained workload to make that happen. Do you think that Parks and Rec has that ability, once you, if you were to get up and going with this inventory, to keep it fresh and easily updated? Or would we be looking at a potential need for a little bit of dollars to make sure that Parks and Rec is keeping the inventory updated as they go along, as years pass by?
Well, that's a really good question, and I would say, can we keep it easily updated? I'm going to take "easy" out of that. That's, it's, excuse me, it's always going to be work, and we'll have to prioritize it. But I do believe that we have the ability and the technology in place to do it. And that inventory, as I think you just said, it's, an inventory is only as good as the day it was collected, unless you're proactive going forward. And so will it potentially, between the inventory, a new and improved inventory, and the development of the community-wide master plan, will we identify some potential gaps in staffing resources? Perhaps. I think we would not be surprised if that comes out of this effort, but I don't know that today. That's really why we want to do this, these two preliminary or first-step planning efforts before we start just chasing ones and twos. And I mean, today, that's kind of what we have to do, is respond to the trees that are calling for the need. And that won't ever change. You'll always have those critical needs come up. But if we can develop a more robust plan for our management system, it's certainly going to help. And I think we'll just have to see where that takes us in future budgets.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Washington.
All right. I recognize that. Would you like to?
I can add to that, because, yeah, I don't think it's cure one area and forget about the other, because it also takes personnel, and it also takes equipment in early part of this year. There were some issues brought up about personnel problems, not being competitive with the private sector, losing personnel once they're trained to go work privately, because it's a higher-paying job. So I think we need to fix those along the way, at the same time, as well as equipment, because we also understood that equipment breakdowns were a lot of problems for the Parks Forestry. So having the proper equipment and good equipment and maintaining it, I think, is also critically important.
Couldn't agree more.
Okay, very good.
Councilman Russell?
I have a question, and I don't know if it's for you, J.J., or Sandra. The 250,000, is that the total cost on what we'd estimate that inventory would take? Or is that a partial cost?
That's a partial cost, yeah. Again, just estimating purposes, we believe an inventory, and what we've heard from the industry and the people we've talked to is that you should anticipate $4 to $7 a tree for an inventory, depending on how robust you go in that inventory, and how much of the conditions assessment side of things you get into, but, excuse me. But, so if you think about that with our number of public trees, we're looking for something around $1 million to do this. And again, we believe there are some places to go. If we have some good seed money that this creates, there's places like the Forest Service grant opportunities. We believe we can go to chase some additional funding to get this funded. We obviously couldn't move forward to the inventory until we had the complete funding in place.
Yeah. And that's a really good question, I thought. Even looking at the cost of this comprehensive inventory and assessment, knowing that it's going to be quite pricey, what I really wanted to do was provide the city a little bit of challenge money that they could use to go after grants, knowing that there is a sizable amount of grant dollars from IRFA already parceled out in the tens of millions of dollars to a couple of organizations here within the state who are providing grant dollars, a subsequent grant program for that. And so I think that these dollars will go a long way in enticing other partners to come in and help us fill that. But we certainly aren't going to start the work until the funds are in place.
Yep. Yeah, finance department gets upset if you sign a contract without money for it.
I think I understand why. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Yes?
Along those same lines, I think it would be nice to get kind of a progress report to the council on what this has done and what the future needs are, so that we can keep our eye on the ball here, so.
Very good.
Yeah. And, well, thank you for all of your good questions. I really appreciate your curiosity about this proposal, because besides everything I mentioned, you know, trees have a huge impact on how our neighborhoods live. And this is also an equity issue, which I won't go into. I'll save those comments for Wednesday, but it is an equity issue around neighborhoods who have shade and neighborhoods who don't. And so I want to make certain that we're paying attention to all the data we get with place matters and with vital signs, and cross-referencing that information, so that every neighborhood in Lincoln has got good tree cover, good shade. And I think this is a good way to start, but I recognize what Councilman Duden and Becky has have both said about the need to look at the other facets of community forestry and staffing, equipment, and many other things. So let's work on this with my colleagues' help. And with that, we're going to move forward to submittal number three. All right. The third submittal was brought to us by Councilmember Duden. It is to move $100,000 for fiscal year 2425 from city council reappropriations to Lincoln Police Department training budget. Councilman Duden?
Yeah, and I kind of brought this up because I felt that the $60,000 in the budget for the Lincoln Police Department was way too low. When you calculate that among, what, 375-some officers, thereabouts, that's a really small figure, especially if you want to bring in professionals, train the trainers, that sort of thing. And I think training is an epic portion of public safety in general. And you can't sit idle on it. There are technology advancements, the drones that we're seeing, the helicopter that we have in the air now. We have all these new technologies. Probably some thermal imaging could help in some investigations, that sort of thing. So all that kind of training, and of course, you can't fail to mention executive protection-type tactics and things like that for the SWAT team, which we saw fail on Saturday. So I think all those types of training things should be of critical importance to public safety for Lincoln, Nebraska. So that's why I brought that figure up, so. And looking at where it comes from, from the city council reappropriations accounts, funds, looks like over the last several years that we've been saving money, tax dollars, and I'd rather see them put to use than set. and I'd rather see them put to use than, than sit idle. So I think this is just a good, a good thing to be doing from, from all of us, from the council here, so. That's why I came up with that.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, we'll start right here with Councilman Carlson.
A little bit like my last line of question, but where's that $100,000 come from? Is that just a dent of, of what you see is, is remoting the issue? Or is there some data behind what, what this would be used for?
Yeah, maybe Steve could come up and help me with that.
Okay.
Because I contacted Finance to find out what kind of funds were
Steve Hupke, interim Finance Director. I think maybe your question is more about the purpose of the money rather than where it's coming from.
Correct, correct. Yeah, I'm curious on the, the purpose of the origination of, of that 100,000. Was it just a
Just a ballpark number.
ballpark number for what additional training would look like?
Yeah.
And so we don't know what classes this would involve?
No.
Or what type of training this would involve or anything like that?
No. I just knew that, that 60,000 that they had planned on was just way too, way too low. You calculate that per officer, that's a real low dollar amount. And I'm not saying that you have to bring in these experts from all over the country to train the entire department, but sometimes it's good to send officers to training and, and then bring that information and education back and share it with the members of the department. And for, as far as in-service training, more or less, not so much recruit academy training, but in-service training. And I think a higher trained police department is a better reactive police department to the community.
Council, Councilman Becky, please.
AC Dale, if you're here, I would love to have the opportunity to talk to you a little bit.
Good afternoon.
Hello. Do you want to introduce yourself for the?
Sure. Ryan Dale, Assistant Chief, Lincoln Police Department, 575 South 10th Street.
Thank you, AC Dale, for coming forward. Appreciate it. I appreciate Councilman Duden's request to reappropriate City Council funds to additional training for LPD. Last week, actually, you and I had a discussion regarding a new training plan with LSO, with LPD training LSO. Not a monetary exchange for that, but can you talk a little bit about training in general for, for LPD? You know, what that looks like in terms of your, your kind of annual training? And then, you know, Councilman Duden referenced a $60,000 training budget in the, the itemization of the department. But perhaps that doesn't cover all of the training that's already built into other departments? Can you talk generally about that?
Sure. Beyond the initial police academy that everyone has to go through, we require, as a department, every commission staff to complete 40 hours of ongoing training on an annual basis. State law requires a minimum of 32 hours, and they break it down into certain topics that are required. So we actually exceed what's required by the state slightly, just because of the value that we place on, on that and having our staff be up to speed to handle a wide variety of things and give the community good service. So we offer roughly 40 hours of in-service training every year and eight, eight-hour blocks to all of our employees. So that includes some of the hands-on things like firearms, defensive tactics, emergency vehicle operations, those hands-on things, TASER. Then it also includes classroom instruction on things like diversity, equity, inclusion, different mental health-related topics, both for how to work with the community and how to look after each other for mental health topics, de-escalation, you know, I could go on and on. So there's that structured in-service training that's offered to all of our commissioned employees. Most of that training, our professional staff is also welcome to attend. For example, CPR is a course that a lot of our professional staff take advantage of coming to as well. Then on top of the in-service type training, we also both host outside training and then send people to outside training. And we try and leverage getting people certified as instructors to be kind of a force multiplier with that. So say, say a course to train 30 people, to bring in the course would be $10,000. Usually, it's much, much more economical to send two or three people to that training and maybe spend $1,000 and then can train 350-plus officers. So we get a lot more bang for our buck. We also leverage, try to leverage grants to help with training and then tap into re-appropriated funds, of our own re-appropriated funds as well sometimes, to help fund training.
Couple other questions for you, AC Dale. Are there acts, aspects of training that the department does on a regular basis that would be, this is getting a little specific, and I apologize for the question, that would be found, the funding for that training would be found built into another area of the budget line item?
Yes. So the $60,000 that Counselor Duden references is classified, classified as, I forget what it's called, but conferences and professional development or something like that.
Something like that.
So that would be where we pull sending people to outside training, both commissioned and professional, sending them to outside training, bringing outside training in, that sort of thing. There's also another bu, budget line item that's, I think, titled Education and Training that, if my memory serves me correctly, is $145,300. That has, that covers other internal training. $69,300 of that is specific to Axon and their virtual reality platform. So that covers basically the lease of the virtual reality equipment and then to get our, to get our trainers trained so they can train others. So that, that would be the other component that comes to mind. I believe our academy would come out of, expenses related to the academy would come out of that piece as well.
Okay. And then, AC Dale, are you aware of, kind of piggybacking off of Councilman Carlson's questions, are you aware of opportunities for, for matching grant dollars, anything like that, that are on the horizon here in the next fiscal year that you think might be really important for us as a council to reappropriate funds in order to take advantage of other funding mechanisms out there so that we can really leverage those dollars as strongly as possible?
I know this fall, we're bringing in a leadership course that I'm, I'm pretty sure is grant-funded, and that's something that's already in place and worked out. As far as other grants that are on the horizon that we're interested in applying in, nothing else comes to mind that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Thank you, AC Dale.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Chair Washington.
Thank you. Councilman Bowers, please.
I appreciate you bringing this up, Tom. I think the, one thing that I'm a little worried about or be wanting to have a conversation about is the fact that it's coming out of City Council Reappropriations. And is there another place that we could look at to use funding? I've already made statements before about making sure that the council has enough resources to do our job and provide constituent services and oversight of departments. And I'm worried about draining our City Council budget when that, those dollars had been appropriated to help provide support for council. So that's my biggest concern, is trying to find another way to find those dollars that, so it doesn't come out of City Council. I guess it's more of a statement than a question.
Councilman Duden.
Chair Washington, thank you. I don't think it's our responsibility to start a savings account for the City Council members. And when I noticed the size of that, the money that's there already, I thought that would be a good place to, to, to park it with the, the police department's training budget. And I know they can use it. And they don't turn, they don't turn it down. I know that. And I just don't, I think tax dollars are supposed to be going towards things that assist with public safety and not the wannabes and savings type items that we're trying to create for the, for council members and that sort of thing. And when I found out that there was, I think we've got 178,000 in there now and another 288,000 total, I just thought, yeah, that's, that's, that's quite a bit of the taxpayers' dollars, and it should be going towards something that can benefit the public. And I don't really think banking that those, those funds is, is the right way to go about things. So that's why I came up with that. I, I will say, since we're talking about that, and we haven't mentioned Item Four, but I was going to pull Item Four from that because I actually learned late that the Fire Department had about $156,000 in their training budget. And I was just trying to keep the public safety kind of even steven. So that's, that's why I came up with Number Four, but I didn't get the numbers until late after the submittal. We don't, we don't get a lot of time to plan what we want to do here when it comes to questioning the budget and things like that, so.
Yeah.
It's kind of crunch time.
For sure.
And I didn't get a chance to really to talk about any of my colleagues here as well. I did have some conversation with, with Sandra Washington about Parks, and I can't disagree with that. I'm an old Parks employee, for crying out loud. And I'm also an old police employee that really was blessed with being sent to a lot of external training and brought it back to the department. So I know a little bit what that, that feels like. And frankly, that's why I still teach in the criminal justice area as well because from that professional development that the citizens of Lincoln paid for, for me to attend and, and do at LPD, teachings away for me to give back as, as well as being on the City Council too, so.
No, for sure. And I hear what you're saying about, you know, not keeping a, a healthy savings account within the City Council budget. I just think one of the reasons why that got formed is because we've continuously had a newer council, right? We have a relatively young council when it comes to length of service, right? I think Benny's the longest-serving one, and he's on year six, right?
Oh, I thought you were talking about my age.
No, 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 no.
No, we would not do that. But thank you for mentioning it.
We lost, we lost two folks that were, I guess, three, that were district members, you know, that had only served, or two that had only served one term. And so I'm concerned that like, we as a council haven't had an opportunity really to like, get a handle on how to best utilize those resources. And I'm a little concerned about giving up those resources before everyone's had a little bit of time to become acclimated and figure out the learning curve. Because, I mean, you're right, there's things like the budget and being able to have more time. And I'm worried that giving away our resources will hurt our future ability to be able to provide support and resources to each other when it comes to doing our jobs of resident services and oversight of departments and monitoring the budget. So I, I can get behind it. I'm not, and we can definitely talk later about this, but that's just my biggest concern, Tom, if there's any wiggle room to have a conversation.
Sure.
Don't agree to anything now, let's talk first.
Councilman Weber.
Thank you, Chair Washington. Councilmen, you know, I want the best-trained police force that we possibly can have. I'm just struggling with the rationale for, for two parts of this. One, I understand that you say you don't want a savings account to be, that, that you don't want a City Council savings account. And I understand, you know, if we, if we spend those resources, I, I just am struggling with the rationale of why taking reserves from one department and spending that on another department, right? Like, why specifically one department, the City Council, going to a different department, the police department?
Are you aware of more reserves?
I mean, I, I don't, I, I'm genuinely curious if, if there are other reserves.
I guess, I was just trying to play my own sandbox there.
Okay.
So that's why I came up with the idea, so.
Because I, I worry about getting in the habit of going from, you know, incentivizing our departments to be fiscally responsible and then punishing them when they are. You know, we've paid for body cameras and other resources for police officers using reserve funding, and I want to make sure that we're able to keep those incentives for our departments to be fiscally responsible in place. And so that, that is one of my worries. And then my, the other part of the rationale that I've been struggling with is the 100,000. What that pays for, what budget items that, line items that goes to? Does that go to virtual reality training? Does that go to professional development? Does that go to academy expenditures? I just
I'm not trying to restrict it, but
Yeah, absolutely.
I was thinking more in, in the way of in-service training to veteran officers because, like Ryan talked about, there's more, there's, there's always more responsibility and expectations of law enforcement. Especially as it pertains to mental health patients now and how to deal with them, how to deal with the homeless, how to deal with intoxicated people and substance abuse. And I think training in, in all those areas are critical for the future for all law enforcement. And it's not something that you can just take once and then never hear about it. I mean, even, I'll say the same thing about police ethics. You know, they teach it in the academy, but that is something that probably needs to be touched on every year, you know? So, especially in the society that we have now. And I'm just trying to make the, the police department the, the most trained and have the, the best and greatest opportunities that are out there so that we can, they can be good in all those areas, so.
And I, I don't disagree with that at all. I'm all for continuing education. I'm all for having as well of a trained police department as we can. I'm just curious, kind of, you know, similar to that conversation we had with Trees, like, what do we get for the $100,000 that we're investing in our police department? I guess that's kind of, and, and maybe AC Dale would be better suited to explain, you know, if this 100,000 gets allotted to LPD, where does that go?
Well, I don't, I don't know that I have a real detailed answer for you because this is new to me here within the last couple of days. So we haven't had a chance to sit down, and I haven't visited with Mr. Duden about it or with the rest of our staff. But I imagine a lot of it would just go to grow what we're already trying to do with leadership courses and ethics and multicultural-type courses, and just keep growing those things. Also, might provide an opportunity to bring in a guest speaker here and there that might have more of an impact on our staff than one of our own staff can. You know, sometimes I think it's human nature to listen to an expert in the field versus one of your peers.
Yeah.
And I would say that we would continue to try and lever, try and maximize those dollars by getting people certified as instructors and things so we could, you know, not just have it be a one-time training, but continue to train those things on an ongoing basis. But I'm sorry, I don't
No, no, absolutely.
specific answer that we've already decided on or anything like that.
Well, and I appreciate that just because I want to make sure that we're being very intentional with our investments. And I want to make sure that, you know, these are taxpayer dollars. So I want to make sure we're not just putting a round number here, a round number here, but that we're being really thoughtful about what is the best bang for our buck we can get with our, our constituents, you know, tax, you know, it's their dollars at the end of the day. I want to make sure we're being as responsible and appropriate as we can be. And, and kind of going off of that same question, I don't know if it'd be for Councilmen or for you, what happens if there's any leftover, you know, if, if we're not trying to build up savings, right? I'm curious, what do we do if there's, if we over-appropriate or over-allocate funding? And how do we make sure we don't under-appropriate or under-allocate as well?
I think that's a, I think that's a valid point in, in every budget, for crying out loud.
Absolutely.
It happens.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes they get a savings on a certain item that they budgeted for and, you know, some of those decisions can be made at the end of the year, for crying out loud, so. I don't think that's a never, never issue. I just know that, and Ryan kind of touched on it, even when you train personnel within the department, after a while, some of the officers don't heed quite that message like it would come from of the officers don't heed quite that message like it would come from an outside expert that comes in and talks to the officers. So credentials and credibility is important when you're a trainer, your background. And when you're an expert in the area, it draws a lot more attention. And I'm sure the fire department would confirm that same thing for firefighters, so. And sometimes that's expensive. Sometimes you try to benefit as much as you can. When you bring in somebody, it's going to cost 10,000 bucks to have them come in. But sometimes that's worth it. I can remember once I hired Tom Osborne to speak at a banquet, and that wasn't cheap either.
[laughing]
But it was worth it because of the message that he had and he brought forward, and it was about leadership. So you might want to look at old Tom.
For the record, Tom has come and talked to the police department and didn't charge us.
Oh, that's good.
Oh, very good, very good.
Excellent.
I must have been a better negotiator.
Well, thank you for pointing that out, AC Dale.
Very good.
Well, I don't want to take up any more time, but I do, and I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Like I said, I want the best-trained police officers, just like I want the best-trained lawyers, firefighters, lifeguards. I just want to make sure that we're being very thoughtful with how much we're allocating, where we're allocating it, and where it's coming from. And I still just have some questions that I think you and I can work through together.
Okay.
Well, we've got, Councilman Beckis, before you speak, I just want to recognize that we still have one other proposal, and we have another meeting that begins in 12 minutes. And so I wanted to ask AC Dale if you would stick around a little bit after this meeting, because I think that, I have a few other questions that really have to do with the operationalizing of an additional $100,000, because I want to make certain that we all have, understand whether or not everyone's getting their 40 hours a year. I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot. And then whether or not additional money will help them get their 40 if they're not getting their 40 hours. And with that, Mr. Beckis, I'm going to let you have the last question on this proposal, and then we're going to move right along to the next one.
Thank you, Chair Washington. I like Tom's proposal, but I also know that there's a lot of other discussions going on regarding those dollars. But I think it's worthwhile for it to move on. I would be supportive as well of LFR also. You say you're pulling number four. I think that that's an appropriate discussion as well. The only thing I wanted to add, Chair Washington, is that, yes, city council does have additional funding for talking purposes for council members going forward. I would like to make sure that council members reserve $20,000 for potential new furniture needed when the county board decides to renovate our offices. So there are additional funds that, beyond what Councilman Duden has expressed utilizing, if people want to utilize more city council re-appropriated funds, I would just make the request to please reserve $20,000 so that we can appropriately outfit the council offices when those are redone later this year, early next year, as a reminder for folks.
Thank you for that reminder. All right. Thank you, AC Dale.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we're going to be in conversation over the next 48 hours. All right. The fifth proposal, the fourth today, was submitted by Councilmember Duden to designate $50,000 funding from the FY 2024-25 CIP project, park acquisition, demolition, and development projects, to support the development and implementation of a ballfield improvements plan. Work with the Parks and Recreation Foundation to identify a grant, donation, or corporate sponsorship to match the amount designated in the Parks and Recreation CIP project. This plan would help efficiently and effectively direct additional funding for ballfield improvements. Councilman Duden.
Well, I kind of started this on a mission here, so to speak, after we had an individual testify here at the council meetings complaining about the condition of our ballfields. And so I also took it upon myself to walk a lot of those fields and what have you, and especially Jensen Park, which I found to be the worst, which was a park donated, land donated by Dale Jensen, who was a huge entrepreneur here in Lincoln. And yet, we have a park that reflects on his donation that looks absolutely horrible. The ball diamonds are there, but I'll tell you, for those kids that play on that field, we might as well have them play on concrete, because I can't imagine sliding into second base on that field because it's just hard as a rock. No trees planned or put anywhere. And it's my understanding that when the YMCA and the school combined was built out there on park land, that LPS had to buy additional land that joined that property. So the park did not lose its size at all. It's still the same size. And it was actually proposed to be at the site of a 12-field youth complex once upon a time. And I kind of confirmed that by speaking with Len Johnson, who is the ex-retired director of Parks and Recreation, had a good conversation with him about that. I've looked at some of the other fields, and I've noticed some deficiencies that, you know, when you drag a field, and that means you take some equipment and you drag like a chunk of fence or something like that on the field, and you do it in a circle around the pitcher's mound. And when you do that, year after year after year, you eventually build up a ramp between the infield and the outfield. And so there's a huge lip there. And I walked at some of those fields and saw those lips, and I thought, well, you know, about every other year, you probably ought to take a blade to that and smooth that out. But so, I just noticed that there were some deficiencies there. And we had a huge, I wanted to kind of add to this, but on top of it, I know that we're building a skateboard park in South Haymarket. So I had to wonder, well, how many skateboarders is that going to support? Versus how many baseball, youth baseball players do we have in Lincoln? And I was kind of confronted with, well, we maybe have 300, 400 skateboarders. And when I asked about the numbers on youth baseball, it exceeded 5,000. And I thought, well, where's the comparison here? You know, where's the equity as it pertains to one sport to the other? And I think, and I think all these sports are important, don't get me wrong. I'm not sure I'd be any good at skateboarding now. I'd have to have an awful lot of pads on myself. But I am a big fan of youth baseball, and all sports in general, because you have parents that meet one another. It becomes more of a social community event when you have a baseball game, when you're sitting on the sidelines in lawn chairs and you're watching your grandson or your child play. And these are, I think, important factors for Lincoln, because when you look at Lincoln, you know, we've produced some pretty good athletes in this town over the years. Alex Gordon, to be probably one of the most famous ones baseball-wise in most recent years. But, you know, I think we need to do a better job of looking at all sports. Maybe we need a major sports complex for tennis, youth baseball, and skateboarding, you know, all three, combine them all. Have softball diamonds there. Because right now, we're losing tax dollars when youth play baseball in Lincoln, because there's no tournaments here. There's not enough fields. So parents are driving to Kansas City, they're driving to Omaha, they're driving to Des Moines, they're driving to Topeka. They're going everywhere else but staying in Lincoln, Nebraska. And this has been happening for years and years and years. And I think we need a comprehensive study over some of these ballfields that we have now, what can be done to improve them. And at the same time, let's get into a plan where we're adding some each year. Not every 10 years, and then it costs us an exorbitant amount of money. But maybe we should have a plan where we're adding them all the time. And I know it's a money thing, there's no doubt about that. But at the same time, Lincoln has been blessed with a lot of people that have donated towards social activities and complexes here that are used in the community. And I think they would love to put their name on a ball diamond, or on a base, or on a batter's box, or whatever it might be, as well as some corporate, you know, advertising. I know, years ago, when I was a policeman, I was playing in an overhand fast pitch softball.
Councilman Duden.
My time's up.
You're, I hate to run the red card on you.
Anyway, that's my purpose. That's why I proposed this. And I just think citizens of Lincoln deserve a plan, and not just talk, and so that we can implement something that's actually doable and beneficial to everybody.
Yeah. All right. We've got less than two minutes. Does anyone have anything to ask Councilman Duden?
We're short on time, so I won't ask any questions. But Tom, I would look forward to working with you on this proposal. You know, the Lincoln community has rallied around the Lincoln Youth Complex over the last two years, the City of Lincoln giving ARPA dollars, JPA giving millions of dollars to the development of that complex. So surely softball, baseball, on a, and other sports, because I think that those fields can also accommodate in the outfield other uses as well. We've made a lot of investment, but I hear you in terms of public assets, and would be happy to talk with you further.
I want to reiterate the same. I am a huge fan of youth sports. I have watched my kid actually play on Jensen Field for years in practice sessions. And they slide, even if it's hard. So, hey. So I would like to have that conversation. I also want to really recognize and support the Parks and Rec Department for their quick response on this issue. Director Stuckey, I think, sent it to each of us, committing Lincoln Parks and Rec to putting together a comprehensive work plan.
Yeah, survey.
And conducting an assessment of existing conditions and maintenance practices and developing that community survey. But that work plan, you know, is going to be, including a task group for baseball, softball, six sports. So like the golf committee and the other committees that the Parks Department has. So I know this is a conversation that's going to continue with the community. I support that conversation and look forward to talking with you individually further about that. With that said, I believe we have come to 2:00. And with that, this, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned with one final reminder that this coming Wednesday, July 17, at 1:00 here in council chambers, the council members who are present and accounted for will be voting on these proposals. And so please come back, and we will be in touch with directors and departments in the next 48 hours to gather more information before we take a vote. Thank you very much.